Since this is a finance committee meeting, maybe some of the normal formalities of a regular board meeting aren't applicable, but we'll do a maybe a quick, a quick roll call and a quick pledge. Dr. Kreider, do you have someone on your team that you'd like to have do the pledge this week?
I do. Mrs. Hoffman is ready to do the pledge for us.
Hope we can all stand our hand over our hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Hoffman. That was great. Will the secretary please call the roll and see who's here?
Director Apple.
Here.
Director Frank.
Here.
Director Mendoza.
Here.
Director O'Brien.
Here.
Director Simsek.
Here.
Director Zalewski.
I believe she'll be here shortly. She has a work commitment she's getting out of or finishing. Sorry, Michelle, you might be on mute. We can't hear you.
Try, turn your volume on or turn your volume off and then on on your computer and then try to unmute. Now. Mine would do that occasionally. Maybe try your computer volume, hit mute and then turn it back on. See if that works. And then mute and unmute yourself on.
That's okay. We can, we can finish the roll. I'm not sure who all you covered so far. Director Schreiber.
Here. There we go. That worked.
Okay. Sorry about that. I don't know what happened.
My fault.
I think we got everyone.
Very good. So, Dr. Kreider, we have roll. We've got a pledge. I'll turn it over to you and your team for the finance committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Before we get started, I did want to make some quick announcements just for, for public knowledge. We are off to a very good start to the school year. We started on August 24th. We have a good solid two weeks under our belt. And at this time, many of our students and also our staff members are becoming very acclimated to the online learning and the remote learning that we have in place. We have very good attendance and very good activity from our students, which is fantastic to see them working online. And it's good to walk through the schoolhouse and watch our teachers interact with, with our students as well. We do have one reminder about our food service. Our food service was recently expanded in time from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM as far as serving lunches. Those lunches and breakfasts are served between 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at both of our elementary schools, at Carnegie Elementary School and also at Crafton. And due to an extension of a federal program, regardless of whether or not you're on free or reduced lunch, all of those lunches are being provided free of charge to all of our students. So, any of our families or any of our students who are interested in a meal at no charge, both breakfast and lunch are being served at our elementaries between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM. And remember, those are grab and go. And great food from our food service. So, we greatly appreciate their strength in leading us through, through this time. At this time, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Juswick for our finance report.
Thank you, Dr. Kreider. So, I put together an agenda for this and then we'll go over our budget reports. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so what we're going to do here for the finance committee for September 8th, we're going to do a quick run through of the budget report for 1920, where we're at through August 31st. Just give a brief budget update for 2021. Stay relaxed on the numbers so far with the increased expenses and such. And we haven't made our reversing entries from the audit quite yet. So, these numbers will be a little bit skewed, but I'll give you a little bit of an explanation as of right now. So, I'm going to switch over to my spreadsheet and we can do a run through of that. Okay. So, where we're at right now, this is of August 31st is the closing of the books. We'll have very, very limited invoices coming in through September. For the previous school year, a majority of the invoices should be in. We have a couple filtered through here and there. So, I wouldn't expect a major, major change in expenses. But right now through the 1920 school year, we are at $27,780,000. Last year at this time, through those September expenses in 1819, we're at $28,215,000. So, we have $435,000, less in expenditures. As you can see, we budgeted $29.5 million, close to $29.6 million in expenses this year. So, we're quite a bit under that. As you can see, it's, there's a difference of $1.8 million between budgeted expenses and what our actuals are to this moment. Like I said, we still have to go through the audit and such. And it's all based on somehow of our federal funding came in. And we'll see where we end up. We're in a good place. As you can see too, if you notice this 500 line, that's a big portion of our savings right now. That had a lot to do with us, with the transportation ending and not, not paying that transportation company that is no longer with us right now. So, that's a majority of those savings. Also with the reductions, if you recall, we cut over a quarter of our busing last year. So, that was a huge savings for us overall. And that, that's where, that's where that number really hits from that difference. As we go through, we have not done the accruals yet because we're still waiting for some of those numbers through the audit. As of right now, we have $27,747,000 in revenue. And last year, we finished up at $28,765,000. So, we're about a million short right now. We budgeted seven, an increase of $736,000 worth of revenue from, from 1920, from 1819. So, we did, we're a million under. We budgeted to make, to have $730,000 more. Fortunately, as you see down here, here are accruals from last year from the areas of earned income tax, delinquent taxes, IDEA that we didn't recognize yet, non-ed subsidy and state up, the state benefits as far as the social security reimbursement, the PISers reimbursement and such. So, we still have a lot of that coming through. We were around $1.6 million last year. So, we'll have a little bit less say on the EIT accruals. The auditors gave me a heads up on that. But even at 80% of that number, we would recognize the additional 1.3. Don't hold me to that right now. But I think we'll end up in a good place this year. And as we've discussed previously, what we're looking to do with any surplus, because we budgeted to have a fund balance of 3.1, which would have been even from last year, is to put that towards a, put all that surplus into a capital's projects fund. Because we have some major projects that will need fixed in the next year or two. And that could clean a portion of that up. Unfortunately, not the whole thing. But like I said, a strong portion as, you know, we need killers with our HVAC system because those were not replaced in the energy saving process. We need repairs on our roof, whether that's a new roof or a new ceiling. That could cost anywhere from 400, 500,000. So, there's some major projects. But some of the surplus this year might get us through. And on the other end of it, we're not quite sure we're going to end up this year with the expenditures with the COVID. As I'll get into that. So, if you can see here on this, these lines I have highlighted, I have our numbers as of August 2019, 2020, our expenditures last year, $1.358 million. This year in 2021, we're at 1.6 already. Now, some of that has, well, let me change that. That difference, that, what would that be? About $270,000 difference. That, that more relates to the items we bought for COVID, the supplies. We've, Pima grant alone right now, we have $75,000 worth of supplies we bought there. All the devices we bought, we are, I'd have to, I'd have to get a true number, but we're over $100,000 in new devices this year. So, there were several, that big difference is due to the COVID expenditures. Another additional expenditure, I don't recall, but with the Wilson Group, we pay about $19,000 a quarter. So, we paid that all up front for a 2%, or 3% discount, somewhere around there. So, instead, I only have a $19,000 expense. At this point, we have $76,000. So, there is reasoning. I'm not really concerned about those numbers. What I'm concerned about is some of the coming COVID, COVID expenses where we've been very fortunate where we haven't had employees taking the FF CRA through the CARES Act. But that's a situation, if that happens at some point where several, several other school districts have seen that, you know, you're looking for substitute employees, temporary employees at that point. So, we're, we're trying to work through this world right now.
Chris, I have a question about that. So,
Sure.
But we did have savings in terms of transportation and other things, right? So, those savings still didn't offset the expenses of COVID. Is that fair?
Well, the,
Because you're saying that, you see, you're saying, you're looking at that 2019 versus 2020 versus the 2020, 2021. And you're saying the 2021, the 2020 to 2021 is higher than the 2019 to 2020. And a lot of that is COVID. But
So,
savings, right? Because, I mean, there weren't like, we didn't, we didn't have certain expenses we would have incurred. And so, if, you know what I mean, like, we didn't save anything because of COVID. We,
Well, that's only through August of 2019, those numbers. So, it's August 2019, we didn't save any money because of COVID in August 2019. August 2020 now, we have expenditures because of COVID. Now, when I, when I'm giving our total numbers at the top of the spreadsheet, that's where our 1920 actual, that's through August 31st of 2020. So, that's where you see the $800,000 in savings from, you know, it's from other services, but a majority of that's transportation. Below, I should have, I guess maybe a clearer way to do this too is August 2019. I meant, I meant to put 2019, 2020 school year. So, and this is August 2020, right here. So, at this point, we had no COVID in August 2019. We missed those days, obviously. But August 2020, we're at 1.632 because of some of these COVID expenditures, like the additional device, remote devices, the Chromebooks and such. But last year, we had none of those expenditures.
Hey, Chris?
Yes.
I'm interpreting Jude's question to say that in cell C75, the 1.6 million, there shouldn't be any transportation expenses in that bucket because we weren't busting anybody in August of 2020.
No, and there wouldn't be any transfer. Yeah, there was, and there was no transportation through August of 2019. I mean, there's the little runs we do through the summer. But as far as our first actual transportation bill, we don't see a transportation bill until September for those couple of days of August we were on transportation.
Gotcha.
Right. I mean, I guess part of what I'm asking is, yes, there were savings due to not having even run transportation during COVID, but we had other expenses that somewhat offset them. So, it's not like, well, school wasn't physically in session during that time period. So, we didn't have a lot of expenses. Well, actually, we still incurred most of our expenses and we incurred other expenses that offset a lot of those.
And I, I see what you're saying. And here's a good example of this. So, row 15 here, which I
Yep.
That's just highlighted. We had a million, over a million dollars in supplies last year. We budgeted 854. So, we won't spend extra 155,000. That is partly due to some of the COVID, COVID expenses we incurred. So, that was, that was additional money we probably wouldn't have spent on, on general supplies. But a lot of that was tied up in the COVID expenses because once again, that was, that was lab, the Chromebooks from last year. That was, that was cleaning and safety supplies because at one point, hey, we thought we might come back. And then we knew we would need these supplies going into next year. So, yeah, that's a perfect example is that 600, we were 155K higher in that instance.
Yes, that's what I'm asking. Because, I mean, 72, 73% of our budget is personal costs that aren't going to change.
Yeah.
Based on COVID. And then, yes, you have savings some places, but then other places, they're going to be offset by increased costs. That's what I was, that's what I was wanting to verify, that we didn't have, you know, a big change or a big, for us, expense wise, a good impact by COVID. It sort of, everything balanced out. Wasn't necessarily financially beneficial.
Correct. And, you know, we could see that money be offset this year by expenditures we have. Like we said, we're, we're still navigating this world. We don't know what available, availability we'll have with staff at certain points if we come back and such. So, it, it's going to be unique. And I don't think we've seen the true impact of some of this as far as expenses go.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chris, will you get into the revenue piece as well?
Yes, I can do that. So, okay, here's our revenues. Here's the thing, through August of 2019 last year, we were at 8.5 million. Now, I'd like to be a little bit more excited about our 10.8 this year. But as you can see, that's where I said we have 1.6 in accruals. The auditors did not make those accruals yet. So, if you make those, add that 1.6 back from their reversing entries, you're at 10.22 million. We're at about 10.8 million right now. So, we're still above pace from last year. So, that's good. It's just not, not as extreme. So, as you can see, we would have, if you had that 1.6 million back in, our surplus through August of 2019 would be about 8.8 million. This year, we're at 9.2 million.
Do you know if the increase, do you know if the increased revenue is due to a better collection rate or if it's the millage?
I think it's, it's the millage increase. I'd have to go back and look at our EIT to see where that's coming in so far. But I, it's a majority of that's due to that millage increase. I'd have to do a full analyzation of our revenues at this time to really determine what areas have hit.
Okay. I guess my, the point of my question was, should, should we be concerned yet about a significant drop off in collection percentage? And it seems like the early answer is no, not yet. But we'll keep an eye on it.
I, I think we're going to stay in that 2% to 3% range of a drop from what I'm seeing so far. So, if we stay in that range with the millage increase, I believe we budgeted for that. Right now, I'm not concerned to say, hey, we're going to lose 5% of our collection rate. That's where I would be concerned. I don't see that right now. But the other theory to that too could be, you know, the people that pay early, pay early. I'm of the habit personally, I get the bill. I write my check, send it in and forget about it. So, I think you have the people that are in the habit of paying early. So, we haven't quite seen that drop of the people that aren't going to pay. If that, that seems logical. I think that people that consistently pay early, that can pay early, have continued that, that habit.
Okay. Let me pause just quickly. Ask Bill, have you seen or heard anything from other districts and other collecting bodies about their collection rates?
No, I have not seen anything or heard anything concrete, just the estimates that we were talking about over the summer. But nobody has put on any data such as Chris has that I'm, that I've seen. So,
Okay.
I can't tell you whether that's good, bad, or average, or whatever. I just, this first data of this nature I've seen.
And on, on top of that too, when I've spoken to other business managers, there hasn't been, you know, when there is a concern with other business managers, it does get out there. I have not had one person question their collection rates and ask me, hey, how are yours coming in or such? So, and like I said, I think that leads things more towards the aspect that the people that are able to and that consistently pay earlier are the ones that are paying. I'm, I'm more concerned to see what happens here and when we get middle of September, October and get past the discount date a little bit.
Good point.
But right now, I feel comfortable.
Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to go back to the agenda.
And before you go back to the agenda,
Sure.
we do have one question. And the individual says, I remember you saying that we had grants that covered a lot of the COVID costs. Are those, are those reflected in the accrual column?
Actually, if I get back into the agenda, I'll be able to answer that question as we get through. We have a whole section on grants. So, I'll pull that back up.
Got it.
Okay. So, if you can see, I have my grant update here. So, that is not reflected in that accrual at this point. That is not an actual. We budgeted some of those grants. And I'll kind of explain as we go on. The FEMA Pima grant, that has been submitted. We submitted a total expenditures of $69,546. We are waiting to see what expenses all get approved. I didn't see too much of a headache with, from what they told us because a majority of our cleaning supplies. We had a couple pieces of equipment we put in there, such as floor scrubbers, our, the gator we purchased to help move some of that, that equipment around and get supplies around on the building quicker. So, we'll see how that all comes through. But that would be reimbursed at 75%. We did not budget for any of that revenue to come in based on the fact, this is a whole new grant. It's very unknown. We weren't even sure on the guidance of it when we were completing our budget. So, we're hoping to get some of that back. Like I said, we were a little unsure because the expenses were not approved beforehand. I just submitted it, I believe, last week with quite a bit of joy that we got that over with because that, that was, that was a very detailed grant we had to get in. The next one was the PCC COVID safety grant. That goes along with the security grant we've gotten in years past. In 1819, it was 25,000. 1920, it was 35,000. Those years, that grant was more based towards security of the building where the projects we did, we put glass block in the pool area versus, we had thinner, thinner windows, almost like a garage door type thing. So, much more secure. We put bulletproof glass and entry, entryways and such. So, we did some of those things with the security. They wanted us to focus more on COVID supplies, remote learning, mental health for the students. So, they originally came out with the guidance that we would get around 215,000. We budgeted for 215,000. They released 175, 175,000 of this money. We're still waiting to see if they release that 40,000. So, until we actually receive this money, we don't count it in our actuals. But we can count that in our, our budget at that time. Unfortunately, we budgeted $40,000 higher. But we still may get that. There's a second release of the grant. The expenditures, Dr. Kreider and myself worked on that one. They were fortunately finally approved. We had to do some maneuvering on it. Part of the things was, and a part of the grant expenditures was the chill room. Dr. Kreider, he discussed that at a previous, previous board meeting. So, we were partially able to pay for that. That, that's for therapeutic services down at Carnegie Elementary. We updated all the public restrooms, the hand free flush. And we, I believe in some of them, we even improved. There were also touch free sinks also in some of the areas. We had electrostatic sprayers. So, that's, they almost look like a backpack you put on and you go spray each room. It allows quick disinfecting of anywhere in the district. So, that's good because nightly, when kids come back and even when the teachers are back, our cleaning staff goes through and does that. Devices for remote learning. In this grant alone, we spent $130,000 there for all that equipment. And I put a little note on here with our tech team that got all this up and running, Josh Jones, Angie Sanone, and Angie Kniff. They were, over the past two or three weeks, been, well, actually, the whole summer, were very dedicated staff to this. And we really appreciate all the work they put in. So, the next one was the ESR grant per the CARES Act. This one was around $450,000. It's due October 30th. We're working with our federal grants coordinator, Lisa Rowley, to get this submitted. This grant will focus on upgrades in tech for remote learning, student mental health, ESL training and curriculum. And continue our education program through maintaining staff. So, overall, we're not quite completed on it. We have an idea for the majority of the uses for this, but we're still working through it at this time. Because once again, there're a little bit of a lack of guidance. So, we're going to get this submitted as early as possible. Lisa and myself, we're hoping to get this in by the end of this week. So, we can get as much feedback as possible. And this is one Sarah Hoffman, our pupil services director worked on and Mantich helped us out with us. Dr. Mantich and Dr. Kreider chipped in also. So, they, they really helped on my end with the educational aspects of it. And we worked together to get this one and see how it would best benefit the district. So, we're still waiting for an award of that grant. Then, once again, I mentioned the additional 40,000. So, we're hoping to get that grant, should be available. Two additional ones that came out in the past couple of weeks is the GARE grant. That is the governor's, I believe it's Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. That is $16,576 for students with special needs. Sarah, if you, is there anything to add to that? Because I felt we had a lack of guidance on that part two at this point.
Yes, they just released it last week. And it is the governor's, one of the governor's grants. But it is to provide services and supports for students with disabilities who experience a loss in the skill, behavior, or lack of progress due to the closure in the spring. So, what we need to do is, we're going to, we're in the process of assessing the students and collecting baseline data, going through and seeing, you know, while we're, whatever mode of instruction we're in, if they're able to recoup those skills. If they're not, then we have to, they're, again, they're going to release more information. But that money is supposed to be used for how they're going to make up those lost skills that they have academically and behaviorally for those students. So, again, we're building the ship as we're, as we're driving it. So, more information will be forthcoming.
Okay. Then also, we, there was another $41,009 released to the district. This is an APSI grant. This relates to additional targeted support and improvement under the Every Student Succeeds Act. I believe this directly relates to our high school. And this is another one where we're still waiting on guidance for. And if you notice, the continuing theme through all these is waiting on guidance. So, these were two, like I said, the past two to three weeks. Did we budget for them? No. The other thing is, these may be expenditures that add to our budget because of what they're specifically written for, depending on the guidance, because it's not something we can just pay for that already exists. So, we're waiting on, like I said, we continue to wait on guidance for some of these to see where we can spend. We're getting them uploaded. I mean, there's a lot of new grants. It's, it's constantly moving. So, we'll see where we, we'll give an update is, you know, we get more information as these get approved. But we have not received an actual dollar for any of the, any of these yet. We're still in that phase of approval, submission. We got part of them submitted and, you know, we're working on that next step with the other half. So, the last, last area I have to talk about this evening is, we wanted to talk about some areas where we've looked to make sure the district stays viable financially. Some of the, some of the programs and operations. You know, one of the things we continue to do at Carlington is constant review of programs, employment contracts, are current models sustainable? We try to look at things that are outdated, things that were put in contracts years ago. So, when the, when the opportunity arises, we say, does this make sense? Does this, does this certain program make sense? Do we need this with the technology we have? So, we continually review those aspects. And then on the other end, we're always looking at contracts and such. One of the interesting ones we just had, when our, our contract was not due for, I believe, another two years with our copiers and printers, we looked at it. We made the system more efficient. It will save us on paper. We looked at it, we made the system more efficient, it will save us on paper, it put less copiers in the buildings. Eliminated color printing, so we could have it more focused to bring down those expenditures. And what we did with that was, if we paid early, they gave us a two percent discount and we didn't pay a dollar more. So we're going to be paying the exact same amount yearly that we were paying three years ago. So we kept that pretty consistent, so it's just more extending, extending some of the contracts, getting. Getting stability, I guess, in what we're paying to make sure we maintain certain rates, the increases don't get, get too large. Try to keep increases under a couple of percent each year. So that's one of the things we continue to try to do at the district to save money on. The other thing is, we've looked at supplies, we've really switched the way we ordered supplies. When I came in here, one of the strategies we used was just order a boatload of paper at the beginning of the year, we start looking through closets. I, I haven't ordered one sheet of color paper since I arrived at Carlington, because we were so overloaded with that. One of the other aspects was supplies, teachers were ordering supplies, putting a supply order in January and February with their allowance they got. We switched to Amazon, so we wanted to make it more where, okay, does somebody really know what they need for the next school year in January, February? No, we wanted to make it so they could order accurately to what they wanted to get closer to the school year to see what they needed. And we were able to bring that price down through online ordering through Amazon. So we just continue to look at that supply aspect of, and even reviewing software programs and such, and to make sure we're using all that. And then the, the other area I think is, we, I think we've taken a better look at the direction of the fund balance, where that's going. One of the things this year is, we're not looking at any surplus we have left. We had a surplus the past couple of years, very, I would consider three hundred thirty thousand dollars minimal on a thirty million dollar budget. Percentage wise, it is, you're looking at around one percent. So what our plan was this year, discussing with some board members, Dr. Kreider, it's, let's take this money that's in a surplus and direct it towards capital projects. Our plan was to end up with this money, it's not just money, hey, we're throwing it back in the fund balance, we have this money to spend. It's, we're going to find. What makes sense to spend this money, improve the facilities for projects that have been put off for years and years. So we're trying to be more strategic, how we spend that money into the future while maintaining facilities and not just throwing it into that fund balance. Give it a direct purpose at this point. So that's about all I have for this evening unless anybody has any questions.
I don't have a question, Chris, but I would like to compliment kind of your focus over the last year or two on process improvement. And kind of reducing the operational margin, so that basically making savings through just kind of efficient operations as opposed to having to. Make decisions on, in terms of what we provide, you know, services or content. I think it's admirable, thanks.
Thank you, and, and one of the things we do, just because it's budgeted. My theory is, we don't have to spend it, you don't have to spend up to that amount. It's, you know, let's make sure everything's a good expenditure and it makes sense. I'm sure I've driven our news director, people services a little bit crazy already, so. With questioning almost everything, but. But I, I think we're all on a good path with that. Never hurts to ask why.
Chris, I have a question.
Sure.
On the, on the gear grant, the students with special needs. Do we get less as a school district because three or two or three of our kids go to Pathfinder? Or is that the total package for all of our special needs kids?
That's the total package for all of our special needs kids. It came up with, they came up with a formula, they said it was pretty complex from what they had just shared. But it, it's on the P D E website, they released its public knowledge, what amount each school district and if there is cyber school, what they're getting. So we're pretty comparable to other schools that are our size and the population, the numbers that we currently serve. So we currently service two hundred and fifty kids with, for services. So that's how they, I don't know how they all figured everything out, but it's sixteen thousand, so. We'll look, I'll, I'll share with the, the board once I find out how we can spend it and, and use it.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Through the gear grant. It says my internet is unstable, I have Comcast, I have this problem. Can you hear me, just say somebody put up.
We hear you.
Yep.
You're good, George.
Thank you. Did you hear that, Sarah?
No, I'm sorry, it cut out, I, I just heard gear grant, that was the last part I heard, sir.
Okay, you know, you brought up in what you told us. Do we get money, is this the, through the gear grant, does it cover the special ed kids in our cyber, in the, the other cyber schools?
Like, like a Pathfinder, you mean?
Not, not Pathfinder, it would be like, what is it, Pittsburgh Cyber and so forth.
No, that, we currently, that would be, I believe, a charter cyber, sir? Is that what you're referring to?
And Sarah, didn't you say those are, the charter schools, they got their own allocation on that, correct?
Correct, they have their own allocation of funds, so we don't have to share that with anyone. If, we don't have to share the funds with anyone except our own population of students.
Okay, that's good, that's good, thank you very much, Sarah.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So Dr. Kreider, do you have any other topics for our finance committee tonight?
No, we don't have any other, any other topics for the finance, finance meeting here tonight. Any other questions for Mr. Juswick? And I don't think we have any questions from. Anybody joining us tonight either.
I just want to say, Chris, you're amazing.
Thank you.
You're amazing, you have an amazing brain to, to juggle all these things, thanks for coming on with us. Plus tell Angie and the whole crew, please, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and it, it, our admin group, it's been a, this is, through all this COVID stuff. It's been a total team effort, people chipping in on and picking up, you know, if it's educational, I always joke, I said, oh, you guys go for this one. So a great example is with the SRS grant, you know, I got kind of a framework with some of it done, but, you know, Dr. Dr. Kreider. Sarah Hoffman, Dr. Mantich, they all, they all jumped in. So it's like, everybody on this team just is able to jump in and help each other out, where if there's something I have a little bit of a weakness in. I don't have to worry about that because the team jumps right in and picks it up.
It's a team that should go all the way to states.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Prever, I know that you probably want to make the announcement that we're going to head into executive session. We do have, I believe it's litigation, personnel, contract negotiation and some real estate issues on the, on the agenda.
Very good, thank you, yes, any other board member have questions, finance committee questions? If not, do you want a formal motion to adjourn or if we just say we're, we're, we're done for the evening?
You really don't need a formal motion, it's just a committee meeting and you can just declare it as president completed.
All right, any board member have a problem with me declaring us completed for tonight? All right.
If you don't want to, I'll declare it, how's that?
Sounds good, we'll see everybody in the new link in a couple of minutes. We're officially done.